Welcome everybody to the Board of Education meeting. Tonight we need a special meeting, an executive session under CRS 246402E, Contract Negotiations, Discuss Pending Contracts. Can I get a motion for that?
I move that we go into executive session, talk about contracts.
Second.
Roll call Monica please. Oh, was there any discussion? Can I roll call Monica please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
So we'll go into executive session at 5:37? I'd like to bring this meeting to order at 7:15. Just before we get started, can I? I mean 6:45, excuse me, 15 till 7 is what I meant to say. Can I make sure that everybody that's standing in the aisleways? We have an overflow room and under the fire code, we can't have you standing against the walls because people have to be able to exit if we need to. So if I could get you to move to the overflow room as soon as we get room in here, you're more than welcome to come back and I'll let you know as soon as we can whether or not we have room, okay? Thank you.
Should maybe ask some of the directors to let the parents stay.
Sure, do we have some directors in here sitting? Can I get you guys to go to the overflow room so the parents can sit in here? Thank you.
We want to make sure that the parents have children that are going to be recognized.
Yes.
Are you able to bring more chairs in?
No.
No.
You may want to announce it for the people that.
So everybody that went to the overflow room, if you can hear me, would you come back? We have about at least three, maybe four vacated seats in here.
A los papas que necesiten servicios de interpretación, por favor se pasan a este salón y en la parte de atrás estoy para darles el sistema, gracias.
Thank you for the confusion. So first of all, I want to welcome you all for coming. Thanks again for coming, council member Mr. Douglas and council member Mr. Guardiola. I don't know if there's any other city council members here, but thank you for coming. I want to thank the parents all for being here, the community members, everybody that's here. Thank you for taking time out of your day to attend your board meeting. So with that, if we could please stand, have a pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence after that, thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Monica, could I have roll call please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Here.
Dr. Hyde?
Here.
Mrs. Quintana?
Here.
Mr. Rola?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of December the 12th, 2017.
I so move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman? I'm the newest member here and I've just come off a long holiday break. So I've had lots of time to think about a lot of the issues that come up to the board and so forth. And regarding the minutes, I think the board faces a quandary. The Board of Education has adopted Robert's Rules of Order for its parliamentary procedures and we want to maintain open communication, but those two practices work at cross purposes somewhat. This came to my attention over the holidays while I was reviewing board materials waiting for Santa. We have strayed from proper presentation of the minutes. Since our Board of Education uses Robert's Rules as its procedural bible, we simply need to get back on track. I would like to read a passage from Robert's Rules. And this is from chapter 16. Frequently, secretaries make unneeded work for themselves by putting far more into the minutes than is required or appropriate. The most frequent mistakes are trying to summarize the reports offered and arguments made in debate. In fact, in standard form, the minute should generally include only what was done, not what was said. The use of a tape recorder by the secretary can be helpful in preparing the minutes, but a transcription from it should never be used as the minutes themselves. The name and subject of a guest speaker or other program may be given, but no summary of the talk, end quote. So referring to the proposed minutes from the last meeting, the page-long summaries of responses to prior audience comments and the CHSA Fall Leadership Conference presentation are clearly inappropriate for the minutes if we're following Robert's Rules. Furthermore, writing summaries requires that person to make judgments about what is important and what is not important. Clearly, what is important to one person may not be judged important by another person. On the other side of this issue, we want to do everything we can to improve open communications. The board has stated many times that improving communications is a strategic imperative. I agree. I value the comments made by the superintendent, members of the Board of Education, and members of the public. To preserve that information, I want to offer a motion that will allow statements to be entered into the record as exhibits. In that way, we are faithful to Robert's Rules regarding the presentation of minutes and valuable comments are not lost. Mr. Chairman, I am not making a motion at this time, but I want to read the text of what I am prepared to offer as a solution. I welcome your thoughts and the thoughts of the other board members regarding this situation.
So Mr. Hyde, can I stop you right there for a minute? We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, it's been properly seconded. We need to act on that motion. We were under discussion about the minutes that were there, not about the process or any of that other stuff that was involved in that. So if you want to make a motion after we deal with the motion that we have in place, then I'll let you talk at that point in time, okay?
That's fine.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion?
Yes, since I wasn't here, I do not vote.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can I roll call Monica please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
No.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
And Mr. Thomas is abstaining.
Okay. Now, Mr. Hyde, if you would like to have a minute?
Sure. Thank you. And I'll just have a few more words here. So is it appropriate for me to make a motion at this time?
Sure.
Okay. I move the following. Any speaker at a board meeting shall have a written copy of his or her comments archived verbatim whenever the speaker so chooses. Submission shall become an integral part of the public record. The medium of submission, paper or electronic, shall be left to the discretion of the secretary for the board, end quote.
So is that? So is that a motion?
I make that motion.
Okay, so.
Here's, should I give it to Ms. Sevina or to you?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay.
So Harvest wants to see, can I get a second?
I second the motion to include comments into the public record.
Any discussion? All in favor? I mean, yeah, all in favor, can I have roll call Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you. So can I move on to the approval of the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate for me to add some items to the agenda?
Not at this time.
What can I do to ensure that they will be included at the next board meeting?
There's a deadline for you to get agenda items to, Monica. And that's usually the Wednesday before the board meeting. So that way we get the draft out and then the final comes out on Sunday night for your agenda.
So it's the Wednesday before the week of the board meeting?
Yes.
Alright, because I was confused, I understood Ms. Sevina had told me about, I think, maybe the superintendent's deadline and I wasn't sure that that was also the chairman's deadline.
That's the deadline for the agenda.
So if I get it in by Wednesday, then it'll be by 10 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to approve the agenda and a second. Any discussion? Can I roll call Monica please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Now we'll move to recognitions and celebrations, Dr. Abrego.
Yes, we have two. Our first one is going to be Ms. Chavez.
Good evening, members of the board, President Archuleta and community members present. The reason for this recognition is the following. Service above self. For as long as we can all remember, the Commerce City Rotary Club has been a key part of our Adams 14 family and community. For many years, they have supported our students and families, not only from our school district, but county as well. With various programs such as Heart and Soul Shoe Program to provide footwear to children in greatest need, the Oral Healthcare Project for all first graders to promote good oral health and teeth brushing habits as part of February's National Children's Dental Health Month, Dictionary Project for all third graders where students are given a free dictionary for school, the Handshake Project for both middle schools where all students learn and practice the importance of a firm handshake, and scholarships for Adams 14 students pursuing higher education. With gratitude, we would like to say thank you to the members of the Commerce City Rotary Club for all their hard work and going above and beyond for our students and family. Your hard work does not go unnoticed. And we would like to recognize current and past members, President Rhonda, and I apologize if I mispronounce the names, Rhonda Hathaway, President-elect Sean Ford, Treasurer Dan Clark, Secretary Liz Anderson, Club Service Maria Carvajal, Family of Rotary Yolanda Gauthier, Membership Susan Fru, New Generations Renee Bullock, Community Service Norma Portnoy, Vocational Service Michael Scanlon, International Service George Maybe, Rotary Foundation Dale Mingleton, and Past President Renee Bullock, Sergeant of Arms Tom Stra, Co-Treasurer Lisa Riggi, Co-Secretary Harry Nee Smith, and Historian Dick Stevenson. Are they in the?
Are any of them here?
No. Okay.
Yes.
We have one, at least one. So I'd also like to thank the Rotary for what you do. Mr. Rola, thank you for your service on the Rotary. If we could, we'll take a picture with you. Is your family here?
Chair and Rock.
Me and Chair.
Okay. Sure. So we'll go down and take a picture with them. So thank you again, did you have anything else to say? Did you have anything to say? Did you want to say anything?
I'm sure I would.
Okay.
She's the chair of our mental health initiative in our club.
My name's Sharon Maybe and I'm the co-chair of the Mental Health Initiative that we have within our Rotary community and we just want to say thank you to School District 14 for acknowledging that you need to have strong mental health for the children to learn. And last year, we provided both English and Spanish little cards that went into every registration packet for the new, for all students and so that the parents could understand why it's important to have good mental health and we just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, do you have anything to say? Mr. Rola, are you good?
Just I represent the board at the Rotary and all the work they do for our students is unbelievable and we have a really caring group of individuals on our Rotary somewhere around 4250, keeps changing all the time because it keeps getting bigger and bigger. But it's amazing what they do for our students. And a couple of times I've been there to hand out dictionaries or the dental supplies and you ought to see the faces on the students when they receive them. And you know, for the example, the dictionaries when we hand them out is for some students, they say, "This is my first book." And so it's great and I'd just like to say thanks for all your help.
Thank you.
And we do have one more recognition, we have Pat Almeida, the principal of Dupont.
Good evening, President Archuleta, distinguished board members, Dr. Abrego, and the Adams 14 community. My name is Pat Almeida and I'm the principal at Dupont Elementary School. I want to say thank you for allowing us to come here tonight to honor and to recognize the efforts of our parent-to-para pipeline, which is known as the STOP group throughout Adams 14. Dupont has had a tremendous group of parents who are dedicated to their children and thus have given of their time to read with students and help them become better readers. Having them as a dependable part of the instructional day became a real asset and one that we felt we needed to elevate. That's where the Parents-to-Para program came in. If these parents would go through Work Keys Training and pass the Work Keys test, they would receive the credentials necessary to become para educators. We've had several of our parents successfully go through the program and we have a new group going through the program this year. These parents have donated many hours of reading assistance to our children and now they are officially para educators. These parents were bold and courageous in being the first group to go through the program and for that, we as a district are very grateful. So please welcome our para educators as we recognize the efforts of Crystal Lopez, Marisol Mendoza, Alba Ortiz, Sonia Corral, Rayanne Javier, Yolanda Corona, Vanessa Morales, and Miriam Galván. Will you please come up and join us? I'd also like to recognize their coordinator who works with them on a daily basis and that is Mary Philippe. She works tirelessly to make sure that the ladies are ready to go and that our students are the beneficiaries of their efforts. So we are very, very grateful for everything they have done.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for the delay. We've had a change of the guard up here in the president's seat and we had to get the proper terminology on the certificate, so I apologize to you.
In addition, we'd like to recognize one very special person that was part of our initial group. Susanna Torres is a parent who has been a longtime parent volunteer and engaged parent in Adams 14 School District. She is a parent who attends district meetings like the Superintendent Parent Forum to learn about what the district is doing and serves as an active voice to ensure the success of all students in Adams 14. She believes wholeheartedly that parents play a vital role in their child's education. She has been a parent volunteer at Kemp Elementary and this year became the school's PTO president. Last year, we got to know her at Dupont Elementary where she joined the STOP program or STOP Parent-to-Para Professional Program, a program that provides an opportunity for parents and community members to attain a paraprofessional certificate while supporting students who need extra help in reading in grades kindergarten through third grade. Susanna showed up every day, and I can vouch for that, to support by literacy kindergarten and first grade students in reading. The program has re-inspired her passion for teaching. Susanna's commitment to the STOP program is undeniable. As a native Spanish speaker, she has helped the STOP program tremendously by supporting the training of all of our Spanish-speaking volunteers for this year's 2017-18 STOP cohort. She is an asset to the program and we know we couldn't have done it without her support and commitment to the program. Tonight, on behalf of Dupont and the STOP program, we would like to thank and recognize Susanna Torres for her dedication to helping kids succeed, not only at Dupont Elementary School, but across all of Adams 14. Please join me in recognizing Susanna Torres.
I would just like to thank Principal Almeida for all she's done, for all she does for her community members and for making sure that all of her parents are involved in everything and anything that she starts. So thank you, Pat Almeida.
That's all the recognitions that we have. That is all the recognitions.
Okay, so with that, I know we have some students and stuff here. Before we get into audience comments, if you'd like to leave and get ready for school tomorrow, you're more than welcome to. If not, we're going to move straight into audience comments, so. Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to call up Maria Rodriguez.
Buenas tardes, miembros del comité, miembros de la comunidad. Mi nombre es Maria Rodriguez, tengo cuatro niños en el distrito de Adams 14. Good evening, members of the board and community members. My name is Maria Rodriguez and I have four children in Adams 14 Schools.
Dos de ellos en Monaco y dos de, eh, in high school.
Two of them at Monaco and two of them at the high school.
Tengo una pregunta para las personas indicadas en este administración.
I have a question for the key people in this administration.
Porque todo el trimestre, mis hijas del grado nueve y once tuvieron un maestro sustituto en la clase de álgebra.
How come during the first trimester, my daughter in ninth grade and the eleventh grade had a substitute teacher for algebra?
El maestro sustituto, no puedo decir que no haga bien su trabajo.
The substitute teacher cannot say that they do their. The substitute teacher was, cannot say that they do their job well.
Pero como es que las personas responsables de otorgar el servicio.
But how come the people responsible on giving the service?
No estén siendo capaces de contratar a un maestro de acuerdo a las necesidades por las cuales está pasando Adams City High School.
Are incapable of hiring a qualified teacher who can support the needs at the high school.
A mí me dio gusto ver que cuando estaba revisando los grados de mis hijas, estaba el señor Tom Daguerre como maestro titular.
I was pleased to see that Tom Daguerre was the teacher when I was reviewing my kids' schedules.
Y cuando yo le pregunté a las niñas cómo es que trabajaba el señor Daguerre.
And when I asked my daughters, "How did Mr. Daguerre work?"
Me dijeron que él no estaba dando la clase porque normalmente yo conozco al señor y las niñas también.
They told me that normally he wasn't giving the classes, and I know him, and I know my daughters.
Ustedes han evaluado a los niños que tienen un sustituto y un maestro regular, y no es la misma respuesta académica.
You have evaluated students with a regular teacher and a substitute teacher, and the results are not the same.
Y no creo que nada más sean mis hijas. Son la mayoría de los niños que no tienen maestros.
I don't think it's just my daughters. I think it's the majority of the kids who don't have regular teachers.
Muchas gracias, Esther.
Thank you. That is all.
So before we move on, we do have a board policy. There's three minutes to speak. Please say where you're from. Not necessarily your address, but whether or not you're within the district and school district. And there's no ceiling of time. So with that, we'll move forward. Alyssa Mavathorres.
Good evening, President Archuleta, Superintendent Abrego, and distinguished members of the board. My name is Alyssa Mavathorres, and until last month, I was the concurrent enrollment math instructor at Adams City High School. Because I got a little emotional last time I wrote it this time, so I don't leave out anything good. First off, I want to point out in 2015, Gallup presented a comprehensive study titled "The State of the American Manager." They found that 50% of Americans have left a job to get away from their manager at some part in their career. I'm here because I'm one of those people. I'm here to tell you that the sole reason I left Adams City High School as one of those math teachers that are in such high demand was because of the new principal, Gabriela Maldonado, and her policies and practices. I am not the only one to leave the high school this semester. Since I submitted my notice October 2nd.
Excuse me, under the policy number, could you please not say names?
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Since I submitted my letter October 2nd, six other teachers have left the building. We've lost an English language arts coach. We've lost a librarian. We've lost a credit recovery teacher. We've lost a social studies teacher. We've lost another math teacher. She also taught the robotics program. And we've lost a counselor, the senior counselor, who has transferred to Lester Arnold. You have a problem here. It's not normal for teachers to leave mid-year. It's even less normal for them to leave mid-semester. I left because the situation at the high school is intolerable. Teachers are censured. Started with an email that I sent out the first week of school asking to let the math department know which classes were not covered, which classes had subs that needed a teacher, which classes had subs with students that needed materials. I was called in and reprimanded for an all-staff email because I was told that it wasn't only Adams City staff on the email list, and it made it sound like things were not under control at the high school. Things weren't under control at the high school. Teachers that speak up are targeted and put in teaching situations that are impossible to succeed at. I was told that my frustration at my new situation there was inappropriate, and I was overreacting, and I was sent home. Understand that I've been there for five years and through five principals. Seems to believe, seems to be believed that the teachers are not necessary. As the concurrent enrollment instructor, I had 39 students last year that did not need remediation at the college level because they came through my classes. As of the end of last semester, we had 64 that qualified for concurrent enrollment classes, and that was with only one-third of the seniors having been tested. We have built a program there. I was told that CU Succeed would provide a math teacher to concur, to continue the concurrent enrollment program at the high school. CU Succeed was not able to place somebody in the high school this semester. It's not as easy to find those teachers as you'd think. I met with the director of HR and Superintendent Abrego to ask for ways to continue this program.
How much longer do you have?
I have nothing left. I have no time. So I will leave it.
How much longer do you have?
Um, I can read really fast.
Okay, read really fast.
Give me a minute. I was told by the superintendent that they were building a program. Please understood that we had a program, and we had it built, and the legs were cut out from underneath it by chasing me out of the high school. Here's the problem. You believe the principal who says that CU Succeed will come in with a math teacher. You believe those who are telling you that they can build this program. Why do the teachers who are in there, in the school, providing these services not believed? When Ms. Roberts left, she offered to meet so that the robotics program could continue. No one would meet with her. There was not a teacher who was talked to about continuing the robotics program. We've presented qualified math teachers, and they've been, recommendations have been overruled by the principal and HR. Okay, we're down four math teachers. You're down four math teachers at the high school. I'm no longer there. You need to listen to your teachers. You need teachers involved in these processes. And when teachers recommend a principal, an assistant principal, you need to listen to the teachers that are in those schools. Because they are there providing that service for their students, and they know what those students need. They know what that school needs. And to continue to disregard the teachers' voices will continue the failure that we've seen at the high school.
Thank you. Thank you, Alyssa. Jose Silva.
Dr. Abrego, board members, parents and community. We are at a crossroads, a place that in life, when we must decide what we want. When at that crossroad, you have the right to look at the past and one that leads to the uncertain future but with the lens of hope. Adams 14 School District and the old guard that has had a stranglehold on politics has allowed this community to fail. No one is responsible but those of the past and those that lack the courage and places of power to speak their truth. I would be remiss if I did not call some of the board members and the superintendent who has refused to meet with me and three emails, a coward, the wolf in sheep's clothing, the lie that continues and holds the place for the current miscarriage of justice taking place in this community. It would be simple to say, "Resign, Dr. Abrego." That would be too easy. A true statement of commitment to the families in this community would be for all of those of you to look inside and find the greater good and step down with him. The talk that is, the talk that this will die down is the talk of oppressors who make their constituents submit. This is abuse and turns those that you want to submit into being your subjectives. I have sent three emails, and now I will ask before and on record for the answers that I desire and the community so asks. Why did the district pay out over $3 million without public approval and hide this by using insurance deductibles over the last three, four years? You were placed, there is ambiguity into why Dr. Abrego might have been placed on administrative leave or retiring before hiring, before being hired under the night sky here in Adams 14. Please produce a coherent response to why that was, and if the HR information was provided prior to you being appointed to the superintendent, would you still have been a viable candidate? K3 is not a bilinguistic program. It is early exit. It is the most subjective language model constructing meaning and EL achievement of curriculums and ELD strategies. For the syllabi literacy, there are no pathways for other languages. We have Spanish and French at the high school. The district has not invested in other language, and so how can you tell me that you support something that you don't invest in? Can you honestly say? Can you honestly say to these parents that you support the right to comprehensive, sustained, and funded bilingual education? A question posed to the community was, are there any other language invested? None. Through a coherent, through a concurrent investigation that I've launched over the last year, I have found nepotism to be at play with job creations, job shiftings, and all which align with political moves. You, the superintendent, has only stayed in a couple of districts from time to time. You brought textbooks to Adams 14, beyond textbooks to Adams 14, which has no cultural proficiency, pedagogy, or language supports for linguistically diverse students. I will end with this. Have you ever been at the sea in a dense fog when it seemed as if it was tangible white darkness which shut you out in the great ship? Tense, anxious, groped her way towards the shore with the plummet and sounding line, and you waited with the beating heart for something to happen. It was like the ship before my education began. Only I was without a compass or sounding line and no way of knowing how near the harbor was. Light, give me light, was the wordless cry of my soul and the light of the shone on me in that very hour. Helen Keller, I say to you, are you going to be the light or the continued darkness for this community?
With all due respect, you guys, I understand that it's only three minutes, but if you speak really fast, the parents won't understand everything what I said. I tried my best.
And I do want to hear, I do want to hear from everybody, but we do have a time limit. So if you could please honor the time limit. I know I went over the first time, and I went over the second time, but I'm not gonna go over anymore. So if you could please, pardon me? We start when we get done with our thing, so I'm sorry that we started late. But we do have a three-minute time limit. That is board policy. So if we could, I do want to hear from everybody, and I do thank you, Jose, for what you had to say. So with that, can we move forward? Yes, and Jose, you never did say where you were from.
Jose Silva, I'm a doctoral student at the University of Colorado Denver. I'm in the Latino cohort in the Leadership for Educational Equity Program. So this issue is pertinent to what we are fighting for as advocates for children. Jose Silva, student at the University of Colorado Denver. Oh, I don't, I don't speak Spanish, so I apologize.
Okay, you guys are, can we, can we move forward? Alexandria Alonso?
Good evening, President Archuleta, esteemed members of the board and Dr. Abrego. My name is Alexandra Alonso. I am the executive director of CLARO, the Colorado Latino Leadership Advocacy and Research Organization. As a 2016 Capital Fellow in the Department of Higher Education, I worked on the department's efforts in eliminating attainment and opportunity gaps for students in Colorado. In my role at CLARO currently, I represent our organization in multiple equity and education coalitions as well as on the Colorado Department of Education's Accountability Work Group to represent community voices in the development of Colorado State Plan for the Every Student Succeeds Act. I am here to add my voice to the chorus of students, families, educators, and community members who strongly advocate for K-12 bilingual and dual-language education programs over English-only programs. From a holistic and community perspective, bilingual education improves students' social-emotional learning outcomes. It increases their sense of belonging. It strengthens their sense of cultural identity. And it reinforces the value of their sense of self. Empirical research continues to show us that dual-language students have better attendance, fewer behavioral problems, and higher parent engagement outcomes, including an increase in behaviors that are critical to their children's future academic success, like reading to their children. And that, and, and that translates into their learning styles and furthermore into their academic achievement, ultimately providing an incredible added value in the workplace. Bilingualism helped me to grow in my personal and professional life and afforded me opportunities that I would never have had otherwise, including standing here in front of you as a Latina leader of a 53-year-old nonprofit organization. My parents were born in Cuba and Colombia, and they were so afraid about how I would fare speaking Spanish only that they didn't teach me Spanish at all, to the point where I couldn't communicate with my abuela, who was my rock and my soulmate, in our native language until I decided to study it in middle school. But even starting in middle school, I had to wait until I was in college to really be fluent enough and to study my madre lengua. In our increasingly global economy and global community, our goal should not be to continue to undermine the benefits of bilingual education. Instead, it should be to encourage policies that support functional bilingualism and bilinguistic for all students who seek it. I am here to ask you to make these important decisions about how we support emerging bilingual students with the community in mind and to see their linguistic diversity for what it is, an asset for their future and for the future of our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya Hogan.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Hogan, and I serve on the board of For the Colorado Association for Bilingual Education. We are here again advocating for the students, families, and teachers and hoping to get some truthful answers. Today, I would like to address the trustworthiness of Superintendent Dr. Javier Abrego. In the public letter to the community sent on November 30th, he stated he had an open-door policy. However, when our executive director requested a meeting, Dr. Abrego sent an email refusing to meet with Cabe. It was only after multiple times of asking that he finally agreed to meet with our executive director. At the last board meeting, and you can verify this in the YouTube recording of these board meetings, when talking about the civil rights violations, he said, and I quote, "We also have secured the assistance of a third-party expert in responses to all your allegations." When our executive director met with the superintendent, he was told, one, that they were still trying to hire someone, and, two, that they were only looking for someone to look into workplace employment issues. In public, Dr. Abrego said that "we have secured," meaning it is already done, but in a private meeting, he changed his story. He said publicly that the third party would look into all of our allegations. However, later, we find out that it's only the workplace employment issues. He also said at the last board meeting, "To the board and to all of us, I also went to the Colorado Department of Education, and I said, 'I'm requesting that you come into Adams 14 and do an audit of our ELL program.'" As of last week, the Colorado Department of Education's Director of the Office of Culturally and Linguistically Diverse Education, Morgan Cox, informed us that no one from Adams 14 has requested such an audit. The truth in these last two examples would have been fine. We could have accepted that he was going to do these things or was in the process, but instead, he decided to bend the truth, to tell all of us that he had already taken action, done something, when he had not. We are very concerned that if he can speak in half-truths about things that are easily checked, then how can we trust his word about the things that are harder to confirm? At the last board meeting, the superintendent said that no employee or student had been told not to use Spanish. Well, we know of a teacher who was told exactly that, and if you can promise that there won't be retaliation by anyone, we can tell you the truth about what is happening. And that is the real truth, la verdad, and not what the superintendent has been saying. is the real truth, la verdad, and not what the superintendent has been saying to all of us. So, Dr. Abrego, your new slogan is "Believe in Better," yet we can't even believe everything that you say.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Jorge Garcia, and I'm the executive director of the Colorado Association for Bilingual Education. Next week, we're going to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday and everything that he contributed to, to us, to our country, both as minorities and as a community and a country. And Doctor, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." I'm here to report to you that we did meet with, with Superintendent Abrego, and we're happy that we had that meeting. We did get some things clarified, but, but honestly, some, some more questions were raised. So now, we turn to you, because you are the leaders of this system. We turn to you, because you are the ones who hold the trust of the people. You are the ones that they voted for. You can lead us through these troubled times with a focus on honesty, truth, equity, justice, and excellence. Now, there's a pervasive fear in this district, and I'm going to, to, to try to limit my comments to things that you, as a board, truly can do. We know that there are things that you can't do. You have, as has been told to me often, you have but one employee. So we want to talk about this pervasive fear throughout the district. It's real. This is an injustice. It's not because of changes or of an unpopular superintendent. There's a hostile environment that's causing distress and harm, and it's not only to adults. It's not they who are being affected singularly. It's an injustice that our children are being subjected to this type of environment. We are certain that should the Office for Civil Rights come to do a visit today, they'd find that the district is out of compliance. This is an injustice, because that finding would mean that the civil rights of people are being violated. The superintendent, we believe, fails to understand the research on bilingual education models, and he holds antiquated views that are being widely discredited. Now, you sent folks to Arizona to learn about Beyond Textbooks. Why don't you send folks to Denver to learn about bilingual education program models? On February 1st and 2nd, where they can learn about current research and best practices on bilingual education, including the superintendent, the chief academic officer, and, and your principals. The board supervises the superintendent, and we ask you, that next time he calls one of our students limited or deficient, we ask that you interrupt him. It is an injustice. Students and families deserve dignity and respect. If he's reading someone else's words, then shame on him for accepting negative discriminatory biased perceptions of our children. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And just one question for the board regarding the January 25th meeting. Is it a meet-and-greet, or is it a forum for the board to hear from the community? Thank you very much for your time.
Señora Archuleta, Doctor Abrego, está muy largo para traducirlo. Son mis tres minutos. Y los estimados miembros de la junta directiva, mi nombre es María Chavez, soy una mamá de Monaco Elementary, y dos de mis hijos estudian en el Distrito 14. Para mí es muy importante el sello de biliteracidad porque considero que nuestros hijos podrían estar mejor preparados para el futuro, tendrían mejores empleos y más oportunidades en el futuro. En la última junta que tuvimos, usted, Doctor Abrego, preguntó que dónde estaban los padres de familia. Es por eso que estoy aquí, representando a otros padres que tienen miedo de hablar y han sido intimidados, o simplemente no han recibido la información que deberían acerca de este problema, y también para pedirle su apoyo para continuar el programa de lenguaje dual en el Distrito 14. Es muy triste ver la intención de dañar a nuestra comunidad. Digo esto porque al considerar quitar este programa bilingüe, no solo afectan a nuestros hijos, sino también a nosotros como padres que queremos ayudar y estar cerca de la educación de nuestros hijos. Cuando la escuela Monaco Elementary de mi hijo estaba haciendo correctamente el programa de lenguaje dual, yo ayudaba con el trabajo escolar. Cuando la escuela lo cambió y todas las tareas las enviaron en inglés, no he podido apoyarlo de la misma medida en que pude cuando la tarea era en español. Otro ejemplo de este cambio es la primera vez en más de 20 años que las calificaciones no las enviaron solamente en inglés. Les pregunto, comité, esto no es una violación a nuestros derechos? Nos quitaron las conferencias y después de medio año escolar se atreven a engañarnos y quieren vernos, quieren hacernos pensar que no pasa nada cuando todo el trabajo logrado hasta ahora lo quieren dejar a un lado, como si nuestros hijos no tuvieran el derecho de capacitarse en español e inglés, y no solo habilidades de habla, sino también en lectura y escritura. Sé la importancia de que mis hijos aprendan inglés, pero también quiero que sean académicamente competentes en dos idiomas. Porque, por favor, no detengan el programa de lenguaje dual después del tercer grado, sino al contrario. Quiero que mis hijos tengan el programa en el cuarto grado y así sucesivamente hasta el doceavo grado. En la junta del 12 de diciembre, usted, Doctor Abrego, sugirió tener el sello de biliteracidad en varios idiomas. No tiene sentido su comentario si no hay una instrucción a largo plazo. Usted dice apoyar el programa, pero una cosa es decir, y otra muy diferente, convertir sus palabras en hechos y demostrar con acciones que de verdad le interesa el futuro de nuestros hijos. Doctor Abrego, usted también dijo que el español era su primer idioma, y que tuvo que aprender inglés cuando comenzó la escuela, porque no había un programa bilingüe en su escuela, lamento eso, pero no debe de quitarle ese derecho a nuestros hijos solo porque usted no tuvo la oportunidad de estar en un programa dual. Me atrevo también a cuestionar la transparencia y la incapacidad en las respuestas de la directora en Monaco Elementary. Cuando hemos acudido a ella por respuestas, ella da la excusa de no estar enterada de estos cambios. Cuando los directores realmente tienen la autonomía sobre su escuela, indirectamente nos manda cuestionarla usted, Doctor Abrego. Quiero agradecerle a los maestros que apoyan y defienden el programa a pesar de poner en riesgo sus trabajos al venir y dar la cara aquí. Están demostrando más interés en la educación y futuro de nuestros hijos. Siempre estaré agradecida por todo su apoyo, pero no es justo para ellos sentirse preocupados e incómodos en sus trabajos, o incluso amenazados por los cambios que ha hecho usted, Doctor Abrego. Que se ven en la necesidad de buscar nuevos empleos cuando lo único que quieren es el bienestar de nuestros hijos. Es por eso que me atrevo a cuestionar su interés de apoyar el programa bilingüe. Queremos respuestas, queremos acciones, estamos cansados de palabras que se lleva el viento. Queremos hechos, es por eso que le pregunto, Doctor Abrego, ¿va a dejar continuar el programa de lenguaje dual en el Distrito 14? Gracias.
Mr. Archuleta, Doctor Abrego, and esteemed members of the board, my name is María Chavez. I am a mother from Monaco Elementary. Two of my children study at this Adams 14, and for me, is very important, the syllabi literacy is very important, because I consider our children could be better prepared for their future. They would have better jobs and more opportunities in the future. Last meeting, we had with you, Doctor Abrego. You asked, "Where were the parents?" That's why I am here, representing all the parents who are afraid to speak up and have been intimidated or simply have not received the information about this program. I am also here to ask for your support to keep dual language in Adams 14. It is very sad to see the intention, the, to harm our community. I say this because to just consider taking this bilingual program away, it's not only affecting our children, but also us as parents, who would want to help and be involved in the education of our children. When Monaco Elementary School was doing the program correctly of dual language, I used to help with homework, but when the school changed it, all the homework was sent home in English only. I have not been able to help as I used to, when the homework was in Spanish. Another example, that I ask. Another example, I asked the board, "Isn't this a violation of our rights?" I'm sorry, and another example is when the, on the first time, for the first time in over 20 years, grades have been sent only in English, and I ask you, committee, "Isn't this a violation of our rights?" You took away our conferences, and now, in the middle of the year, you have the audacity to trick us, and you want to make us think that nothing is happening, when all the work until now, you want to leave it to the side? As if our children don't have the right to receive education in English and Spanish? And the ability to, not just the ability to speak, but also to read and write? I know the importance for my children to learn English, but I also want them to be bilingual after third grade. I want my children to have the program in fourth grade, and so on and so forth, until 12th grade. On the meeting on December 12th, you, Doctor Abrego, suggested to have the, the syllabi literacy in various languages. This doesn't make any sense, this comment doesn't make any sense if there is an instruction on the long term. You say you support the program, but one thing is to say it, and a very different is to, to convert your words into facts and demonstrate with actions that you really care about the future of our children. Doctor Abrego, you also said that Spanish was your first language, and that you had to learn English when you started school, because there was not a bilingual program at your school. I'm sorry about that, but you should not take that right away from our children, just because you didn't have the opportunity to be in their dual language program. I, I also dare to question the transparency and capability in the answer to Dr. Lechuga. Principal at Monaco Elementary, when we've met with her for answers, the excuse is always that she is unaware of the changes, when the principals really have the autonomy about the school directly. She sends us, to, she makes us question you, Doctor Abrego. I also want to say thank you to the teachers who support and defend this program, even though you are putting your jobs at risk, and thank you for coming here to demonstrate the interest in the education and future of our children. I will always be thankful for all your support, but it's not fair for them to feel worried or uncomfortable at their jobs, or even threatened for the changes that you have made, Doctor Abrego, that they have the necessity to seek other employment, when the only thing they want is our children's well-being. That's why I dare to question your interest in supporting the bilingual program. We want answers, we want actions, we are tired of words that the wind take away. We want action and facts. That's why I ask you, Doctor Abrego, are you going to stop the bilingual program in Adams 14? Gracias.
Gier Musserna, 14122, East 100 in second place. In listening to this, this is the second time, solution, get yourself an advisory committee to advise the board on what's happening at each building and communicating. It is not getting done. Sending parents to educate them and to how they can participate with their children. Don't talk down to them and tell them what has to be done. Show them what has to be done. The eloquence of the speakers tells you that they got a good sense of words that we are getting there. It's a new group of people, well-educated, trying to educate and change their culture in perspective to their needs. Teachers, they need that training, yes, but they also need that support. Administrators need direction as to what is going to happen once you get new people coming in at the dog tracks because of what's being built there. We're not going to have enough space. The county is talking about doing the, redoing the social building into low-income housing. Alsup, central, can't hold it, but yet, we're going to have to ask these people for a meal levy in perspective to increases, to pay for teachers, and to pay for new buildings. You cannot say no, because we have to think about our kids. We have to ask this community to help you. They're here because they care. They're here because they want success, and they also want success from him, but you have to give him that direction. I went to a fundraiser for the mariachi band at the high school. That was in, that was, there was a $5 million bond that was passed to help these kids be in a mariachi band. Twenty-five of those kids that participate in that band are up above a B average, but yet, the suits that they had, they needed help with. They've had those since way back then, way when it was passed. One more minute. What I'm telling you is that they need help. If we can spend money on the band, if we can spend money on sports, we can also spend money on a mariachi to give them the material that they need, okay? They used to perform at the State House. They went to Washington. They went to Phoenix. Okay, I got 30 seconds. Now, these are the things that we have to look at. At the ending of last year, we were looking as to how we can spend the money. If you buy these kids a second-hand suit from China, it won't last. If you want a suit that fits these kids, that they can be proud of and represent this district, it's going to cost them at least $10,000, easy, if not more. That's where you can put the money and bring pride to their kids. Put into existence that advisory committee and have them participate. Put into existence that advisory committee and have them participate. It's local control. We're not, in a sense, some of these other states that don't have that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Serna. Barb McDowell?
I think she's in the other room.
I think Barb's in the other room. Barb, can you come up?
Barb McDowell, Adams 14, Commerce City Classroom Teachers Association. Good evening, President Archuleta, distinguished members of the board, Dr. Abrego. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Classroom Teachers Association. TLCC, the Teaching and Learning Conditions Colorado, formerly known as TEL, will be launched on January 4th and will continue through February 23rd. This is an anonymous confidential survey for school-based staff to share their perceptions of teaching and learning conditions. This survey is a joint partnership from a number of organizations like CEA, our state organization, CDE and CASE, just to name a few. Our district kicked the state off in 2015 and have had, for the previous two terms, one of the highest participation rates in the state. The CTA will be working with the district to provide pizza to all of the sites who have 75% participation. CTA leadership, along with CEA leaders, have already begun hosting listening tours. This is where we sit and listen to staff about what is working and needs improving at their site. We've already visited Rose Hill in December, and will start up again in the next couple of weeks. We are also going to be continuing to schedule house meetings with parents and community members by the end of January, where we can find out what their perception of the schools and the district are on their point. I also wanted to share some positive items around the district. The Rose Hill staff wanted you to know that their assistant's principal, Jen, is amazing. According to the staff, she always creates meaningful professional development so that teachers can focus on and improve their teaching. She works to make the staff feel valued and has worked very hard to create a positive and professional relationship with all staff members. The staff is incredibly supportive and take care of each other. At the last minute, before winter break, they learned that a colleague had to have surgery for cancer during breaks, so they had raised $150 quickly to help support that teacher and her family, the family. Now, on a separate note, today I met up with one of my former students during Parent Engagement Day, who told me he was not in an ELD class all year. He is Level 3, of which there are six levels. In layman's terms, that means he is still in the developing stage of his language development. We begin taking access, our language test, next week. This child has received zero support all year, and now has to take a language assessment in a few days. It is my greatest hope all schedules at the high school have been corrected for the second semester, but for this student, and it is also my understanding that some other Level 3 students have missed out on half a year of ELD support. My question to you is how are they supposed to show growth as students and for our district when they have been, for lack of a better term, screwed? Our parents believe we are the experts and we are going to give their children an education they deserve. According to the Center for Public Education, the local school board is a critical public link to public schools. Whether elected or appointed, school board members serve their communities in several important ways. First and foremost, school boards look out for students. Education is not a line item on the school board's agenda, it is the only item. Please ensure that all of our students are receiving the education they deserve.
Thank you, Barb.